Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Who stands for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here he is.
That's right, we'll start without you.
Hi, everybody. Here's another one of our wonderful dogs from our dog kennel. This week, we're featuring, he's a shepherd chow mix. He was a stray. He's in cage 18, if anybody's interested. Our kennel hours are 10 to 6, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Wednesday, 10 to 4:30, Thursday and Friday, 10 to 4:00. And Saturday and Monday, we're closed. Come here, buddy. Come on. Look in there. Come here. Look. Show them how cute you are. Say, "Come on, take me home." We have plenty of dogs to choose from, so if you're interested in a pet, come check out our dog kennel. And Howard, you gonna take this one, too?
Uh, we only have real birds the longer we have.
Oh, darn. All right. Thank you.
For the benefit of the audience, Hal, our cameraman, took the first dog that Lori showed. And did your dog get re-adopted?
Yeah.
My dog got re-adopted? Good, okay. How about your dog, Betty?
I understand that a family, we had a little black lab, three-month-old mix last week, and I understand he went to a happy family in Lorraine County. So, we've had a pretty good track record. This is May 5th, and May 5th is the 53rd National Day of Prayer. It's a grand moment to meet with friends of your church family, to intercede earnestly for our nation and its leaders. If all you have today is you, take a moment and intercede anyway. Your prayer makes a difference in wonderful ways you may never know. This evening at 7:00 PM at the Palace in Lorraine, Lorraine Countyans will also gather for a public session of prayer. I would like to move with the Commissioner's approval to item number 10 on the agenda, which is a decision on the proposed annexation of 91.23 acres from La Grange Township to the village of La Grange, Attorney Paul E. Blevins' agent. We have a format that is suggested to us from the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, which is based on the revised code section, dealing with expedited type-two annexation petitions. For the benefit of the public that might not be versed in this, and we're not necessarily as versed as we might be after a couple of years, this is a relatively new section in the code. This is not a public hearing, but it is an action of the Board of Commissioners, and we will try to let you know what is going on as we proceed. First of all, I would like to invite Attorney Blevins, who is representing the petitioners, to make any statement that he would like to make.
Well, thank you. Thanks for having me back. I'll make it brief, since we went over, I believe, all the issues last time around. As I see it, there were three issues that we got hung up on last time around. One was an issue of the property description, of the original property description. In the prior filing, had one discrepancy, which was corrected, and we had filed a motion to amend that description. In this filing, the property description was corrected from the get-go, and we have no indication from the County Engineers Department that they had a problem with the description. There was also a discrepancy with the filing of the village's ordinances. They had filed their ordinances on the 21st day, whereas Mr. Phillips pointed out that the statute says 20 days. Our position was, that's a technical glitch that could be overcome. Nevertheless, this time around, the ordinances of the village were filed on the 15th day, well within the 20 days. Also, there was some issue as to the road maintenance ordinance, as to whether it adequately took care of handing out responsibility for the roadways that are being impacted by the annexation. The village has revised its road maintenance ordinance and has broadened it to basically say, if any problem at all ever comes up with the roadways impacted by this annexation, they will take care of it. We believe that that was the intent of it previously as well, but the language is even clearer and made it clarified. And those are the issues that we discussed. I think that's what got hung up on, and I'll leave it at that. If there are any questions, and if Mr. Phillips wants to raise some new issues, I'd be happy to address those.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins.
Thank you.
If at any time the Commissioners have questions, please. Mr. Phillips?
Gerald W. Phillips, and my address is 35955 Detroit Road in Avon, and I'm here on behalf of the residents and express the trustees' concerns. Mr. Blevins, correct, they did correct the property description, they did timely file, but we raised a number of issues last time, and these are the same issues that we have raised again. This is a statutory item, and it must comply with the conditions in 709.023E, you know, subsection 1 through 7. In the primary, the most important and most critical, is the fact that legally, as we stand here today, the village of La Grange cannot legally provide the services that they make in their statement. They cannot provide sanitary source services, because the area that they're proposing to be annexed is in the LARCO planning area. And I submitted last time documents and exhibits. Exhibit G is the La Grange Township resolution, designating that they're in that district. Exhibit H, which is the entry by the court setting up the LARCO district. Exhibit J, the agreement between LARCO and the city of Avon Lake to service that area. Exhibit K, that says that LARCO, in order to transfer from the LARCO district to the village of La Grange, they have to go through Noacka, and they haven't filed an application, they haven't got the approval, and they haven't gotten the consent. So as we stand here today, legally, the village of La Grange cannot provide sanitary services to that annexed territory. The only one that can legally provide that is LARCO. And that's all the items that were provided last time, and again this time. And that's a condition of 709.023E6, that says that they must be able to provide the necessary services, including sanitary source. So legally, they can't do that. So they can put anything they want on a piece of paper and say, "We'll provide the services," but if legally, they can't, they can't. And they haven't met the conditions of the statute. And that's the most important one, and the most critical. I mean, obviously, the trustees, La Grange and their objections, also indicated subsection E4, E5, and E7, in addition to E6. And those deals with the maintenance. I disagree with Mr. Blevins. I think their resolution is very generic, as far as solving the maintenance thing. Still's not specific enough, and it still doesn't deal with the segmenting the roadway and assuring the services, and that would be under subsection E7. The territory that they're doing, they're leaving small slivers of land, and that's highlighted in item 9 in their legal descriptions. They're gonna have 10-feet strips in parts of the highway that's not gonna be annexed, and they're gonna be surrounded and made islands. And that doesn't satisfy subsection E5, that says you can't create islands. And E4 deals with the fact that they're supposed to meet the perimeter test, and with these gaps, because of these islands, they don't meet the 5%, and it's not contiguous, and continuous. So, same arguments we made last time, they haven't been cured, they haven't been corrected. And the most critical is, is the only person that can provide sanitary source for that annexed area is LARCO pursuant to their various agreements, as indicated in those exhibits. The resolution, exhibit G, exhibit H, and I, which is the setting up of LARCO, and also the agreement between LARCO and the county to service that area. The village of La Grange legally cannot service that area, and therefore, they can't provide the services, and they haven't met 709.023E6, and therefore, the statutory condition isn't met, and you need to deny the annexation. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips, before you leave, can you ask, you need an answer to a question. You brought that up last time when we had our hearing here, and I spoke with the people at Noacka, and basically, the response to me was, LARCO does have that service district, but he who gets there first, it can be changed. Noacka said, "That's normally not a problem for the service area. The municipality can service the area sooner than another district."
Well, they need to apply, and need to go and get the consent, but as we stand here today, legally, they don't have the right to service that area. I mean, they could've went, after the meeting on March 31st, filed the application, and gone through the process, and then they could say legally, they could. But as we stand here today, legally, they cannot. And that's not my fault, not your fault, they should've took the steps, they were aware of it. And if it's not a problem, they can't, but it can be objected to, and it can be appealed. They need to go through the proper procedures, and they haven't. And legally, the village of La Grange cannot provide the services as we stand here today. Could they, if they go through and they get the consent, and after that whole process and appeals? Maybe. But you can't deal in maybes. Statutory specific, is that condition met? And as you vote today, is it met? It's not.
Paul?
No, it's fine. I wasn't even looking. I was...
Thank you for this opportunity to respond. Let me address first the sewer issue, which is subsection 6 of the seven areas that the County Commissioners have to look at in order to determine whether this should be approved or not. I'll read from subsection 6. "The municipal corporation to which the annexation is proposed has agreed to provide to the territory proposed for annexation the services specified in the relevant ordinance or resolution adopted under Division C of this subsection." It states that you, as the County Commissioners, are to determine whether the village has agreed to provide the services. The village here has agreed to do that, and the proof is the ordinance that has been filed with the County Commissioners. Mr. Phillips takes that and stretches it to say that the village has to have everything in place to do it. Well, we don't, the village doesn't have pipes out there either. The pipes end at the village, a little bit south of there, on 301. You necessarily have to have the annexation occur before they can go to Noacka and apply for service, the right to serve that area. Let me correct Mr. Phillips a little bit. It's not just LARCO's district, it's the county's district. The county and LARCO share that, and County Commissioners agreed to do that several years ago. Also, let me remind the Commissioners of a prior annexation. The two of the board members weren't on the board at that time, but it did occur under the new law, the law that we're looking at right now. It was the first annexation that occurred under the new law. It involved La Grange Township and La Grange Village, and was actually the annexation of the property where the new high school was going to be built. At that same point in time, there was no, the property was in LARCO's district, and after the annexation occurred, the village went through the process and had the service district changed. You heard from Mayor Strauss previously at our prior hearing, that that is exactly what the village intends to do. And to the degree that they need to work with LARCO to hammer anything out, they've agreed to do that. But the reason the language says the village has agreed, not that the village has the legal right to, is so that they can begin the process of getting that right. The annexation, it's chicken or the egg, you know? Something has to go first. And in the process that's been set up by the High Legislature, the annexation begins first, and then the regulatory procedure to change over sewer districts occurs. The village has promised to provide the services, and they've also promised to go through the process to change those districts. Mr. Phillips also says that there are some slivers of land, and I believe he's referring to some peninsulas, there are some peninsulas. But subsection 5 of the code indicates that the County Commissioners can only reject this if the annexation will create an unincorporated area of the township that is completely surrounded by the territory proposed for annexation. There are no such islands, island being completely surrounded. There are peninsulas, but that's not a legal basis for rejecting the annexation. And again, and lastly, the Commissioners have the ordinance on road maintenance. Your legal counsel can interpret it. I'll just note that there have been no complaints from the County Engineering Department. Our engineer contacted them and said that, from their perspective, there was no road maintenance problem being created. So, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Mayor Strauss, is the mayor here? Did you care to make comments, Mayor?
Mayor Kim Strauss, village of La Grange. I would like to take offense with what Mr. Phillips has said. The village has done its homework. I have spoke with Noacka, Mr. Beaker. His answer to me was basically the same as what Mr. Blevins has just tried to explain. It basically boils down to the chicken or the egg, which comes first. We are very willing to discuss this with LARCO, but there is nothing to discuss until this annexation has gone through. So why we would waste all that time going through a territorial dispute would basically be a waste of time, a waste of taxpayers' money. And if at that time, after looking at the situation, and we haven't told LARCO, and we have told Noacka this, if they decide that LARCO can serve this property easier, cheaper, whatever the reason would be, the village will gladly release it. There is no argument at this point. And the only other comment I would like to make to the Commissioners is, at the last hearing, Commissioner Kokowski made a comment about the 80 emails that she had received on this annexation. And in the meantime, there was a flyer put out with a lot of propaganda, a lot of lies, a lot of false truths. And President of Council, Gary Concanon, his email was put into this flyer. As of last night, we had received, I believe, 12 emails out of 1,800 and some people in the village, and almost 4,500 in La Grange Township. Out of those 12, seven of them were for the annexation. I believe, you know, we're supposed to look at what the majority wants and what the majority does not want, and I don't believe these numbers constitute any majority whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Strauss. Trustees, I know some are here. Is there any of the trustees who wish to speak? Rita? Rita Canfield?
My name's Rita Canfield, I'm chairperson for the La Grange Township Trustees. In reference to our earlier meeting on this matter, I believe it was Commissioner Blair who asked us to sit down and try to work out some type of compromise between the township and the developer. The fact that the developer filed for annexation again within an hour of that comment, I think signifies that he wasn't serious in your recommendation. The issue of roadway ownership and maintenance has not yet been clearly resolved, and I would think that that would be a primary decision when you come to this. The location of the sewer to service this area has not been clarified. Where does that leave the residents on the west side of Route 301, as far as them being forced to tap into that, depending on where that sewer could be located? They have rights, and at this point, many of those are not prepared to deal with the financial burden of tapping into that type of a sewer. The lot size that Mr. Tippel originally requested, the 125 by 200-foot lot size, has been passed. We did create an R1 district that met his requirement for lot size. Many township residents feel that they've had to deal with abandon when it came to this issue, that we were held up. And I can understand their frustration and their concern on this issue. But in the overall best interests of maintaining the integrity of our community and the township, with the full support of our zoning board, we did pass an R1 designation that met those requirements, as Mr. Tippel had requested. One of the other issues that I think needs to be considered here is what's best for the community, and what's really best for the whole county as a whole, when you deal with these types of issues. While allowing for the development of this property, and what is best for this community, we have made a concession. And it was not one of small proportions, it was a major concession. We gave him exactly what he wanted. And yet, we've had no conversation with him regarding his concessions or his concern for us as a community. This is something that our residents have been very vocal on, and they have worked long and hard, and much to this dismay, sometimes of us even as trustees, we've had to work through this issue. We feel that we have made every effort, a very sincere effort, to resolve this issue in a very amicable manner. What is best for this community, and the township, and the county as a whole, would be to deny this annexation on the grounds that we have provided you with. That gives us a reason, and that you can support, to encourage closer cooperation between developers and communities when we deal with these types of issues. Our support of LARCO, and that as an entity, we think at this point is very critical. They have worked very hard in a number of years to try to deal with, not on the annexation issues, but the development issues for us as a county. We support that. We ask you to please consider the interests of the community as a whole, and the county as a whole, in dealing with this as a land use plan, and support our request and deny this annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Village consent prior to their taking action on scene.
Just to clarify that for you, Commissioner, in the event, should the Commissioners approve the annexation today, it is not final and complete. What happens is, our clerk must then transmit the Commissioner's decision and the record over to the clerk of the village. 60 days after they receive it, it is to be submitted to the village council. The village council then has a period of up to four months in which to approve it. If the village council approves it, then the annexation becomes complete. If the village council does not approve it, it is not finalized. My understanding is that the Township Board of Trustees did approve some changes in their zoning that was more acceptable to the developer. Apparently, there's been some discussion of a referendum petition to withdraw that. And it's also my understanding that should that referendum not come about, there might be a possibility that the developer would still have some interest in staying in the So the point is, there are still some things that could happen even after today, that would permit this property to remain in the township.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Phillips?
Yeah. It's been a very difficult process, and as we're working through it as a Board of Commissioners, and Jerry explained to Commissioner Kokowski, it's more of an administrative move, it's not something we can base on the merit of the residents who live in the township at this time. It's met all seven criteria by Ms. Doranis, but I would like to see a more cooperative effort between the developer and the township, for it to stay in the township. I think that's what our board has been working on with the Community Alliance, and working with other municipalities and townships. Everybody works together, and we all grow and do a better job together, and everybody benefits. I would urge the elected Township Trustees, maybe the entire county or your district, to get together and rework with the state legislators, so something like this doesn't happen, so your voice is actually heard, and not just a matter of a public hearing, because the Commissioners want to hear what everybody thinks. It's a tough decision, but I guess we've all had comments. Any more comments? I will make the motion to approve the annexation per our attorney, Jerry Unis, meeting all seven criteria.
I'll second that motion.
I have another comment, taking off of what Betty said. I don't think the township is saying no to annexation or to development, I'm sorry, not to annexation, to development. They're just trying to keep their township rural. The developer bought that property knowing what the lot sizes were, and then coming in after the fact to try to get an annexation. I don't think it's fair. Got a question for Jerry. Expedited form of annexation is when all parties agree, but there's only one party involved, so I think that's kind of...
There's two parties. The village and the landowners.
But there's only one landowner. I could see if it was a whole group of landowners coming together and saying, "We want to be annexed," but this is one developer with one piece of property, coming to annex property so he can put more houses on his property, just for money. I mean, it's not to benefit the community as a whole. I think either, like Ted said, we need to change the laws at the state. These people need to start making their voices known at the state and get these laws changed, or we, as Commissioners, shouldn't even be involved in this process whatsoever. If it's a checklist, why are we here, or listening to both sides of this issue if we can't represent our people?
Well, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. I certainly understand your feeling that you come out looking like the bad guys. I'm certainly not comfortable here. I represent the township, and I certainly don't enjoy having to give those kind of opinions. The only answer I can give to you is, prior to this new law, even under the old law, when the good of the territory was the factor that you considered, the Supreme Court, in a series of cases, ruled that when all the owners of the property agree that it's for the good of the territory, that's the whole ballgame anyway, so...
All of them, all one of them.
Right, well, that's the way it is. What the new law has done is, in effect, formalized what the case law had previously established.
Maybe we need new case law, Jerry, sorry.
I agree with you, Commissioner. I would love to not be in this position, to have to give those kinds of rulings, but as Commissioner Blair said, we take an oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the State of Ohio, and in my best opinion, that's what the State of Ohio laws require.
There is more than one landowner in this, it isn't just one developer. We have tried and tried to work with the developer, and he has been very good at that. We instituted our R1 smaller lots contiguous to the village, and a group of citizens put a petition forth for a referendum. That was, that zoning was then taken out when that referendum passed. We have gone back, tried to work with him again, and he has, in good faith, worked with us. We have put back in our zoning, that R1, the same group of citizens, have indicated that they will put a referendum in front of the voters again. If they would, if you would turn this down, and these citizens would agree to not putting this to a referendum again, we could solve this whole problem. Had that not gone to referendum the first time, we wouldn't even be here, and that property would still be in the township.
We probably would've liked that real well, Barbara. Thank you for your comments. I would suggest the other way, as was expounded upon by Mr. Ennis. If this is voted upon and proved today, it sits at the village for 60 days. And after that, the village has four months in which to act. They don't have to act immediately. And during that time... And during that time, I think that work with, work with the developer and he with the village so that, and if he's willing to continue to be in the township and the referendum is not brought forward, then he can withdraw his petition from the village and he stays in the township and he gets the lot size that he's asked for.
The whole indication to this thing is, has been this referendum that has held up and held up this project. If, if it's going to go to referendum again, he really has no choice but to do what he's doing, and in all good faith, he has worked with us.
Well, thank you for your comments. And I don't think people want to keep coming back here, so I think, we've got ten days to act, and I felt that we had to do something today, one way or the other. Our timeframe was ten days from today. I don't think it would do us any good to wait another ten days to do something.
Realizing this is not a public hearing, I thank you for allowing us to speak.
Well, Barbara, I've got a question. Two of your three trustees approved the zoning change?
We would prefer to see it stay in the township. No, all three of us approved the zoning change.
All three approved the zoning change, and I would urge the two of you to get together because as I've made the motion to approve the annexation, I'm going to approve it, and see if you can keep the deal together. If not, I don't see that Mr. Tippel has any other options but to go into the...
If it goes to referendum again, no, he will have no option.
Right, so, good luck. He can't wait any longer.
He isn't going to wait for it.
Right, I, I understand that. I'm in business also, so. Any more comments or to the clerk?
Thank, thank you, Gamber.
Thank you.
I just don't see, if this annexation is passed today, that the developer has any reason to work with the township because he'll already have exactly what he wants.
I think there's still sewer issues and such to be worked out. I think he still has time. If there is any reason to work together or any type of relationship left, after two years of fighting this out, they might see, would still be able to work at it.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Okay. Ms. Blair?
I believe Mr. Kahlo made the motion.
He did it the second time. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
No.
Motion carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much, and I hope you guys can work this out. And again, I urge you to contact your state legislatures if you have a problem with the annexation rules. Job and Family Services?
Okay. Job and Family Services bills?
We want to wait just, want to take a...
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to take a break?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Okay, there are no investments today. Number three appropriations?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Okay. Number four transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Number five advances, repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Okay. Number six requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Seven travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number eight bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Number nine, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Sorry, go ahead.
At the conclusion of today's board meeting, the commissioners may recess into executive session to discuss personnel and new hires.
Commissioners, I have a number of issues with regard to potential hires, some matters of contract negotiations, and also, we have a matter of personnel that's also a matter of litigation that we need to refund. So, I would like to discuss all those things at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today. Those are all permissible subjects, allowed under the sunshine law. Thank you.
Number eleven?
Number eleven, instruct the clerk to advertise for food bids for Lorraine County Golden Acres and Lorraine Medina Community-Based Constructive Correctional Facility. Said notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on May 9th and 16th of 2005, and bids to be opened at 2:00 PM on May 23rd in Commissioner's Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number twelve, amend resolution number 90883, adopted August 30th, 1990, on the revised fee schedule for legal counsel appointed by the court to represent indigent criminal defendants. Said amendment is to reflect a $250 cap to felonies handled in the municipal courts.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Number thirteen, approve and enter into a contract between Board of Commissioners and Amherst Township to participate in county's joint self-insured healthcare plan, effective retroactive to April 1st, 2005, expiring April 1st, 2008.
You have comments, Mr. Cordes?
I have one, brief one, Commissioners. About, about a week or two ago, we, we were busy moving through the agenda pretty quick and we added Pittfield Township, and I thought that that was a renewal, but it was a new addition. And I just want to point out that we continue to enjoy quite a great deal of success with our pooling of resources with the townships and the villages. I should have noted at that time that they were a new political subdivision joining on what's becoming a, you know, a massive pool that the county offers out to the whole county. It's one of our success stories and cooperative efforts. And I'm working with the city of Lorraine right now on bringing them into our life insurance pool. And we also pool our life insurance, and we have more people in the pool of life insurance than we do in the healthcare because it's a little bit easier benefit to, to manipulate so that we have similar outcomes. But I wanted to note that this is a renewal with Amherst, but we continue to strive to provide those services out to the community and things are working real well.
This is a renewal?
This is a renewal. It should say renewal on it.
Doesn't.
It doesn't have it.
Well, it's a renewal contract, but it's still a renewal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I'd just like to echo your comments, and I would also like to commend the county administrator because it's through his expertise that this health insurance plan is so important and good for various political subdivisions. When I came here in 1991, we had a self-insured healthcare plan that was $2 million in the hole. So, this is, this is very good for our county. And you suppose that the state will give us some brownie points for cooperative efforts in this?
Well, you know, we're, we're out there trying to expand it. I was very encouraged with the city of Lorraine on the, on the life insurance benefits and some other things. We're, we're working towards some cooperative outcomes. There's a lot of duplication of efforts. By the way, as an aside, it's something that came up earlier in the year, we're also working with the townships on the elevator contracts to try to take all of our elevator contracts and the elevators that we've installed with CDVG funded at various locations in the township and incorporate them into one global contract. If we're successful with that, then we're going to take that to the next level and then maybe get into the municipalities and try to get them to come on. I'm pretty much an incrementalist. I, I don't want to take on, take on too much, but I think if we can have a success and then we can build on that and grow. So, we're working on a lot of those efforts that come out of the community alliance and we're, we're trying to take these programs and, yes, by the end of the year, we're going to make a, a, a long list of the cooperative efforts that we have in place. We're going to send them down to state and say, you know, "We're already doing this. You didn't need the legislative in because in Lorraine County, we're way ahead of the power curve on these things."
So, keep sending our money. I guess we need a motion?
We need to vote, yeah.
We need to vote, or do we need a motion? Talk some about a motion. I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number fourteen, amend resolution number 05296, adopted April 7, 2005, approving and entering into a contract between Board of Commissioners and Pittfield Township to participate in county's joint self-insured healthcare plan. Said amendment is to reflect the effective date will be June 1st, 2005, rather than April 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Number fifteen, approve the 2005 through 2009 community housing improvement strategy.
Mr. Twining, do you have any comments?
Welcome back. Hope you're feeling better.
Just a brief comment. This was a process that started about fifteen months ago. Every five years, we have to create a housing improvement strategy for the county. It is the areas that do not operate their own CHIS or CHIP program. City of Lorraine, city of Illyria, city of North Ridgeville, and the city of Oberlin currently are the ones, I believe, that operate so. Our CHIS will cover all other jurisdictions. It has been submitted to the state for a cursory review, and they said that we now have everything in place that would make it acceptable once the Board of Commissioners officially approve this.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Okay. Number sixteen, award various contracts for assistance from CDVG, FY04, emergency home repair activity. Account number 12604-2501-450422. Number one is KMU Trucking and Excavating in Avon for Robert J. and Mary D. Bonert at 33162 Schwartz Road in Avon for a sewer tie-in. Two bids were received, this being the most responsive, and the second one, Daniels Construction Incorporated, Berlin Heights, Ohio, to Patricia A. Coy at 50660 Garfield Road. Henrietta Township for a foundation repair, and this was the only bid received.
I'll so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Twining, I see this, the first one was for a sewer tie-in. Is that something normally covered under CDVG money?
Yes, it is. If it's income-eligible, and on that particular one, what we run into quite often isn't just making the connection. This is one where the sewer line is on the opposite side of the road, so there's boring under the road, so this is a little more complicated.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Okay. Seventeen, instruct the clerk to advertise for RFPs for Lorraine County's Fair Housing Services Program for CDBG FY 2005. The notice will be published in the Morning Journal on May 6th and 13th of 2005, and the deadline for RFPs are 4:00 PM on Friday, May 27th, 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number eighteen, approve and enter into a purchase of service agreement between Board of Commissioners and Job and Family Services for Ombudsman Services. The contract is effective July 1st, 2005, through June 30th, 2006, at a rate not to exceed $6,410.86.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Cordes? Will we be giving them our ombudsman, or how is this going to work?
We, we already have a cooperative agreement that's been in place, oh, six, seven years now. We actually share ombudsman services. Current incumbent ombudsman, Alan, spends time here for, with us, and then he spends time out at Job and Family Services. They are reasonably pleased with the way the process has gone. It also capitalizes upon neither one of us having this huge full-time need, so we're, I think it's worked well in the sharing the resources. We, we pay the bulk, but it's still best, you know, still good to get something back. And I think it's worked well for, for them and us, and I would encourage you to, to continue that.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Number nineteen, approve and enter into various purchase of service agreements between Lorraine County Department, Job and Family Services, and various vendors for summer camp experiences for OWF children using TANF funds. Authorize Director of Job and Family Services to execute contract on behalf of the commissioners as needed with prosecutor's approval as to form. The first item is Common Ground located in Oberlin, Ohio, for 210 camp placements at Earth Camp in the amount of $32,500, effective June 20th, 2005, through August 5th, 2005, for a seven-week period. The second item, Horizon Activity Center, North Homestead, Ohio, for 420 camp placements at 10 Lorraine County sites in the amount of $299,880, effective June 13, 2005, through July 22nd, 2005, for a six-week period. The third item, Linden School, Illyria, Ohio, for 15 camp placements in the amount of $26,100, effective June 6, 2005, through August 31st, 2005, 12.5-week period. The fourth item, Little Lighthouse Learning Center in Lorraine, Ohio, for 20 camp placements in the amount of $32,480, effective June 6, 2005, through August 31st, 2005, for a 12.5-week period.
So moved.
Second, and I'd like to comment, the Common Ground, I've been out there before. It's a great place for kids in the earth camps, very effective, it's very educational.
I'd like to comment also, that was the, out of all four of them, by far the cheapest per week for these children, and it's too bad the other ones didn't fall more in line. Does this money come out of federal grant money or for Job and Family Services?
Yeah, these, this is, what all ends up, starts as federal and it trickles down. It's a great program they offer every year. I'm so glad you said some encouraging words about Common Ground because I just sent a proposal out to the WDA that was brought in, and I sat with Commissioner Blair yesterday and, and heard a proposal from Terry Good, and they have some foundation, well, they don't really have foundation, but they have other dollars, and they're looking to get $10,000 or $15,000 from us to put together the $45,000 necessary to run a summer program for adverse youth out at Common Ground. And it was, it was a really very, very nicely-prepared proposal, and I'm hoping that we can get some, some youth council dollars, but if we can't, I may be coming back on behalf of them and knocking on your door. So, it's good to know you feel so comfortable with, with Common Ground. It's a great place.
Well, I've sponsored the Earth Camp before, and I believe anybody would like to participate. It's only like $160 to sponsor a student to go to the Earth Camp. It's a very worthwhile event, so if anybody's interested, I'm sure you can contact Common Ground and they'll take your check.
Any further discussion?
Go ahead.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number twenty, eliminate the Saturday connector service on the Avon Lake, Avon and Amherst, South Amherst and Oberlin in accordance with the public hearing that was held on Thursday, April 14th, 2005, at 2:00 PM. Mr. Cordes?
Commissioners, I really don't have generally a large amount of comments on this. We've had the public meetings, we've tried to work within the confines of the plan prepared by the consultants to mitigate the difficulty for the residents as best possible while providing for the most effective and efficient use of the limited resources that we have. Their recommendation and supported by Mr. Ferguson after the hearings was to continue on with this slight reduction in services. It's necessary to continue to contain the dollars we have. I will indicate to you that ridership continues to grow. It's up, and we need to support those routes that are serving the most amount of residents with the few dollars that we have. This route just wasn't as productive. Now, are you going to find one person or two people or a third person that may say[1773.83] it was critical to them? Probably, no doubt. But it needs to be critical to more to be able to be justified within the cost structure. And I, while it's a difficult decision, I encourage you to support this change in service.
Thank you. I'll so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
We're going to let you vote this time.
That's okay.
Twenty-one, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Children's Services to utilize their Shell Oil Gasoline Credit Card, not to exceed $200, and the agency's Master Card not to exceed $2,500 for year 2005. Said usage for the purchase of gas, oil, and emergency motor vehicle repair for county-owned or leased vehicles. So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
The deletions, were those because they are no longer working for us, and the additions, new hires, or?
It could be new hires, it could be somebody fell from grace. It's a, I think that they look at their driver's list and what they need for the year, and they authorize or remove as they deem necessary. There are a lot of folks that go out to the community, and they have their own small fleet of cars, actually, it's a little bit large, and so this is, you'll see this on again and off again every once in a while. But I don't think there was any problem with, with the list, but I would venture to say probably it's the same people. It's just our standard terminology.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number 22, award contract to Crossroads Asphalt and Recycling in Columbia Station, Ohio, in the amount of $314,850.93 for the 2005 CHIP and SEAL Program. Four bids were received on April 25th, this being the most responsive, based on the Commissioners' Resolution 01-132 on February 8th, 2001. This was a local preference, and the Engineer's Recommendation. Engineer's estimate was $334,581, and will be paid for 100% by MBGT Funds, account number Issue a notice to precede letter effective on or before July 1st, 2005, and to be completed on or before August 15th, 2005. Authorize the county administrator to release retainage at completion of said project.
Mr. Cortez?
Commissioners, I'm not sure, this is the first time I've had one of these since you've taken the seat here. We have a local preference policy that provides under $300,000 bids, up to 3% consideration for local contractors to keep our dollars here and churn them in our economy here. This one wasn't very huge, I think the difference was less than $100. But it's very encouraging that we get our local vendors here, and we make them competitive. I would, I would urge you to continue to support that program. It was adopted by previous administration, but it's produced very good outcomes here in Lorraine County, and I think that it'll continue to produce good outcomes in the future. Sometimes the dollars get into a few thousand, but those few thousands sometimes give off smaller people the edge to compete here, and it's productive for the community.
It's a good policy, and I'd be 100% behind that.
And it was less than $50. I'll so move.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Number 23, award contract to Signal Service Incorporated, Warrensville, Ohio, in the amount of $45,836.20 for the Cable Road Signal at Midview School. Three bids were received on April 11th, this being the most responsive, complying with specifications and the Engineer's Recommendation. Engineer's estimate was $64,046.15. Issue a notice to precede letter effective on or before July 15th, and to be completed on or before October 30th. Authorize the county administrator to notify county auditor to release retainage at completion of said project.
I'll so move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Twenty-four, request ODOT to review the engineer and traffic investigation and determine and declare a reasonable and safe prima facie speed limit on Holly Road, TR 44, from Webster Road to Pratt Road in Wellington and Huntington Township. The current speed is 55 miles per hour and should warrant 45 miles per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Twenty-five, authorize the release of retainage to Integrator.com Incorporated, Noblesville, Indiana, in the amount of $13,736 for work performed on the inmate video visitation system for Lorraine County Sheriff's Office. All necessary paperwork has been completed.
Sheriff Stometi's here this morning. You have any comments, Sheriff? It's nice to see you.
Commissioners, everybody, good morning. Sheriff Phil Stometi, Captain Drazdowski, my jail director's here also. We implemented this system on April 11th, and I'll tell you, it's worked very well. We had to train the employees on it, and had the inmates get used to it, but it's been running for about a month now, and it's worked very well, so we're very pleased with it.
While you're up there, Sheriff, the previous item, dropping the speed from 55 to 45 miles an hour on Webster to Pratt Road in Wellington, Huntington Township, do you feel that's a good idea?
Obviously, that must have came from the township officials, and yes, I think if they think it's needed, then we'll back them on that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Number 26, award contract to Mark's Construction in Valley View in the amount of $33,281.49 for the Fall Road Ditch Improvement Project. Three bids were received on April 19th. Issue notice to precede letter on or before May 16th, and to be completed on or before June 30th, 2005. Authorize the county administrator to release retainage at completion of said project.
Mr. Zunich is here. Would you like to address the board this morning?
This is our second project of the year. It's a needed project in the Fall Road area. Like they say, they will be starting here pretty shortly, we hope, weather permitting. Our previous job that was approved, just so you know, was Martin's Run, and that one is still being held up by weather. We hope to start it on Monday next week. And we have one more coming that was just completed, the bids, which will be coming in front of you probably the next meeting or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Zunich? I'll so move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
James Cortez, county administrator?
First, I think this is the first opportunity that Janice has had to be a clerk. It's awful hard to be the backup clerk when you don't work with these things on a day-in, day-out basis, and then to come out here and, and sit here, and you have to make decisions, those are difficult, but just reading the agenda and trying to get it all out there and keep it organized is quite a task, and, you know, Janice does as our backup, and you're getting better and better, so.
And she did a nice job, too, Jan.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm glad we have her, otherwise I may have to be the backup clerk.
We couldn't understand you when you talked.
You probably couldn't. So I'm definitely appreciative that she's here. The other thing is, Ron, I, we had, we had some information on fair housing reports that was requested by people. I thought I sent an email over to your staff yesterday to make sure it was here. Did we, you have the opportunity to gain some insight into that?
Yes, we did. It is in front of you, and the three people that specifically requested that, I've given that, too, and I also have additional copies, should anybody from the public want to see those.
I appreciate it, just wanted to make sure we were.
I've got a good staff. It was done while I was.
I appreciate that. It's just that we owed, and we told them to look into it, and we wanted to make sure they got it. And the last thing, some good news for an issue that Commissioner Blair has near and dear to heart. We had a request, and I honored the request on behalf of the board, to extend the lease on the Farm Services space out in, out at the Solid Water, out on Rusher Road. Hopefully, that's a prelude to, you know, a continued relationship. I got that out of my office, the moment the request came in, it went out that afternoon.
Thank you.
So that's some positive news. I know you were championing that issue, and that'll conclude my remarks this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Innes, Assistant County Commissioner?
I don't have any report this morning.
Thank you, Jerry.
Commissioners, report?
Well, I don't actually have a report, I just wanted to congratulate all the winners in Tuesday's election and compliment them for a well-run campaign.
My turn? Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to thank Dan Billman and our Solid Waste Department, along with Lorraine Litter Council and Lorraine Main Street in the litter pickup on Saturday. I happen to have two miles of road from Cooper Foster Park Road to 28th Street on Broadway, and we picked up over 20 bags. So I'd like to thank all my staff who helped us do that, and volunteers, and say it was a great program cleaning up Lorraine. I hope everyone else participates in the Pride Days coming up. And also, congratulations to all the winners and participants. There's another election in two years.
There's another election in November, and then there's another election in 2006.
For the people who didn't make it, Betty. The ones who worked very hard and didn't make it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Those positions are available in two years. I'm sorry, I know you're running next year.
No, that's not what I meant. But again, there's November, and then there's next year. There's always an election. Thank you. Next Thursday, the County Commissioners Association is inviting anyone who's available to come to hear testimony presented to the Senate Finance Committee regarding the Local Government Fund. We also received in response to our letter last week that was emailed to all of the senators, 27th District State Senator Kevin Coughlin responded via email, so he let us know that he at least received it. So I don't know if the other commissioners are interested in going, but I would like to attend next Thursday, so.
Well, let's move our meeting a day, so we can all attend in Columbus and make our fight for government funds.
Or we could cancel our meeting.
Nah.
We're allowed to do that.
Oh, are we? Okay.
Yes. Maybe Mr. Cortez could work on that. We don't have anything.
Is there anything for next week's agenda that's coming up?
Scheduled, no, I checked with Teresa already. We don't have any hearings or anything scheduled for next week.
No, I mean, I think you're going to have a, you know, absolutely have enough meetings for the year. As, as an update, the requirement is for the board to meet at least 50 times, have 50 public hearings a year, and you're already on a pace to, you know, have plenty of room to be able to cancel meetings if it comes up, because a public meeting is also, if you have a meeting on a sewer project, or an annexation, it constitutes public meetings. So you have plenty in reserve in the bank. So it would be the pleasure of the board. I don't know of anything that's going to be too difficult to push off to the following week. Or we could have, if you want, you can have a bifocated meeting where we just approve, you know, the first 10 items, and don't have any other items, and have a very quick meeting on, on another day. Those are normally process items, you know, they're, so if anybody wasn't going to get their check out or something like that, that would be, again, up to the pleasure of the board.
Can you bring us some options, then?
Sure, absolutely. We can, we have time to notify the public, so.
Thank you. There's a possibility that we might not meet next Thursday. And then to piggyback on that, about the Local Government Fund hearing next Thursday, I'd like to recognize Rebecca Gray, the.
Community Alliance.
Yeah, I was trying to think what her title was. She's Program Coordinator, gal variety, do everything for the Community Alliance. Why don't you come to the microphone, Rebecca, and tell us what you did with the copy of the letter that was forwarded to you?
Thank you, Commissioners. We forwarded those letters to every municipality and governmental entity that is a member of the Community Alliance, and implored them to contact our state senator, as well as all the state senators and representatives. As well as we forwarded the information from Senator Fingerhut, the presentation that he made, and we asked that we can hope to keep track of what results come in as that, as they do send that information out. We haven't got any returns yet, but I know that people have received them, so we asked them to contact them.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. That concludes my report, ma'am.
Okay, there's no clerk's report. Board correspondent?
Your reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Any public comment for today?
Shirley Johnson, good morning.
Good morning, Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin. First, I'd like to thank everybody for the quick response on the Fair Housing Report. A curse, a fast look over, it seems to show that there are no discrimination cases, which is a nice thing to see. I have a statement I'd like to read. I am not an academic, poofy or otherwise. However, I am a concerned and interested citizen with a special interest in and knowledge of the Sunshine Law. I have to agree with the Illyria Chronicle Telegram Articles and Editorial of April 30th, 05, about what imminent litigation means, and that it does not apply as a legitimate reason for no public discussion about the dissolution of the Airport Authority and the takeover by the county. According to the State Resource Book, which I have in my little hands, on executive sessions on page 46, court action is pending if a lawsuit has been commenced, imminent if it is on the point of happening. Getting court approval of transfer of assets would, would not seem to fit into this definite, these definitions. Further, your action last week was not only a public policy decision, but also a long-term economic one, but no facts or analysis have ever been presented or discussed in public. The Public Meeting Law on page 2627 states, "The intent of the law is to require governmental bodies to deliberate public issues in public. Deliberations means weighing and examining reasons for and against a choice, and a thorough discussion of the ramifications." There's further explanation about ramifications in the book. Sunshine Week began on March 13th, 05. The Cleveland Pain Dealer had an excellent editorial, which I have a copy of here, and a week of stories explaining the importance of open government. Only two months have passed, and it would seem the message has been forgotten. The public still needs to know whether sound decisions have been made and by whom. We can only know this when discussion is public. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Elizabeth Romicks, Oberlin. I'm thinking I'm going to have to move, lest people think we're in collusion or something, which we're not. I do urge other people to attend these meetings regularly, however, in order to get to know the personalities of the people involved and what's going on, of which there is a great deal. First off, I'd like to say that I have looked at the Oberlin Comprehensive Housing Improvement Survey, a strategy, and it is chock full of all sorts of very useful and interesting information, and statistics, and ideas, and so forth. And if the county one, as I assume, is much the same, it would be very useful for people to take a look at it. I will, however, warn them that the Oberlin one is a good inch thick, so I can only imagine the size of the county one. Nevertheless, obviously, a great deal of work went into these compilations, and they are, as I said, very useful. The other thing, however, I would like to say is in connection with the airport. As you know, Oberlin has long been an interested observer for some very practical reasons. There's been a great deal of upgrading going on out there, some of it apparently very much needed, some of it as a result of the 9/11 matter. For example, that enormous fence that had to be put along the perimeter of the airport, which, incidentally, gives you an idea of the size of the airport's land, most of which we hadn't realized before. The industrial park idea seemed to be a good one. I regretted that the airport mechanics idea they had out there never was able to be carried out, and it does seem as if the industrial park idea is not thinking of great and grandiose LaGuardia in Ohio-type things, but organizations or companies that might perhaps indeed add a lot of jobs, and would not impinge terribly on the environment, or Oberlin for that matter. It's a very complex operation, as I have, as a totally ignorant person, come to realize out there, and it would seem to me that one good question to ask is, how does the Board of Commissioners propose to deal with this? It would, it seemed to me, have to hire a management team. I think you have more than enough on your plates to do anything about that. And so, all of this leads me to four questions. One, whose idea was it? One, whose idea was it? Second, was any member of the L.C.R.A. Authority Board aware that any of these discussions were going on? Third, why do it? And most importantly, from my point of view at any rate, and perhaps for the benefit of the public, why do it this way? It seems to me that what appears to be the secrecy of it, where not even the board members or people at the airport were aware that any of these discussions were going on, at least that seems to be the case, it will only proceed to reinforce suspicions of people who like to be suspicious about what is going on in the county, what is going on in closed sessions, what's going on behind the closed doors of the county's administrative discussions. And all I can say is, if Mr. Kish were here, I'm sure he would have some very good audio-visual aids that would indicate the concern of the community as to the way this was done and the precipitousness of it.
Thank you for your comments, Elizabeth. David?
Good morning, Commissioners. David Ashenhurst Oberlin. I'm not an academic. I have been called a poofy, but I came today hoping that I wouldn't qualify as that. I first want to echo Shirley and Elizabeth that the concern about the discussions of the airport and the way that it was presented by both the administrator and Mr. Innes in talking about whether it qualifies for executive discussion or not, and the difference between pending, imminent, potential, and the use of the word litigation, which is different than that a legal authority has to clear something, as the reason for discussing something in executive session, I hope will be further examined and discussed. And I wanted, because I think what has already been said really gets to the heart of that matter, I also thought it was worthwhile to contrast it with a very good discussion that was held here earlier today, which, as was pointed out, you don't have to have. So I really appreciated that even though you didn't have to have a public discussion of expedited type-two annexation petitions and your responsibilities under them, you chose to have that anyway. Thank you. But it does seem to me that the kind of decision that's been made in the case of the airport is one where you're required to have a public discussion before, or a public, a public meeting and public discussion of that issue before taking an action like that. So I'm lining up to scold a little on the, on what I think really is a Sunshine Law violation, but also to say that, for the most part, I really appreciate when you do hold public discussions when you don't precisely have to. I also, I realize that we, again, generally waive the reading of the board correspondence, and that's good, but your number two here today indicates that Governor Taft responded to your letter regarding Senate Bill 18. He stated that he has serious reservations about an amendment that eliminates increased county and township zoning authority. This is why he is allowing this bill to go into law without his signature. He also stated that the legislative leaders have assured him, have assured that they are willing to reconsider township and county zoning authority, and he has urged the General Assembly to reintroduce this issue in a manner that will foster an open and robust dialogue that will lead to a reasonable solution that addresses the concern of all affected parties. I think that's interesting, given the discussion earlier today about where the county commissioners are asked to approve proceedings that they aren't really given an opportunity to have much of a role in. And I also think it was interesting earlier today that the county commissioners had asked that negotiations continue between the disagreeing parties in an annexation matter that was discussed earlier today, and it sounds like one of the parties to that dispute really ignored the commissioners' recommendation in that way. So I hope, I'm glad that Governor Taft didn't like the elimination of county commissioners' prerogatives and authority in zoning matters, and I hope that, I hope that the county commissioners both get more discretion, and I like it when the county commissioners complain when they're asked to do something without being able to exercise some discretion and consider all that elect you, those that are strictly under your land use authority, but those who are not under your land use authority yet do elect you also, that I think you have a difficult job when you have two, two parties, both of whom you are accountable to, asking things like that. So I both commend you for discussing that and discussing the limits of your maneuverability on an annexation question, but at the same time, I wish you would give us a little more heads up when you're going to do something like dissolve one of your boards. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Flood?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Name's Don Flood, 1112605 Indian Hollow Road, Carlisle Township. And I just wanted to make a kind of a statement here that, like this morning, we had that issue of annexation, and we had two different types of annexation. Probably most of the people in this room that come in here this morning didn't even know there was two different types of annexation. And I know we get that State House report, it's published by the, weekly by the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. We used to get it, one of the former commissioners used to print it and put it out here for people to pick up, and I know you can get it on the website, but people like me that don't have a computer and that either has to go to the library or someplace else to get it. But what I'd like to say is that there ought to be some way that the people, not just in Lorain County, but this whole state, has some way of knowing these House bills and Senate bills that are being brought up before the, their chamber, in their chambers, of these things that's going on, because ninety-nine percent of the people in Ohio don't know what kind of bills are being presented for approval. I happen to have the State House report from April the 29th, and we have House Bill 210, which is on property tax freeze for people over the age of sixty-five. And I guarantee that probably most of the people in the state of Ohio don't even know that there's a bill like this pending. It's put out by Patton, who I don't know who he is, he's a rep, he's a congressperson from one of the counties, but he is sponsoring this. And then there's another bill, it's called House Bill 215, Water and Sewer Rate Discounts, and it's to authorize the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Trustees of the Regional Water and Sewer District to offer discounts on water and sewer rates to persons sixty-five years of age or older. Now, if I hadn't got this, anything like this was going, anything like this was going on. There ought to be some way, it could be published in the paper every week, what House bills and Senate bills are being brought up, because otherwise, I don't know how the people know. And like in the case of two annexations, like I say, probably most of these people this morning didn't even know there was two different types of annexation. And that's all I have to say, but I think there ought to be some way of letting the people, the whole population in the state, know what kind of bills are being brought up.
Thank you, Don. Do we have the ability to scan on our website, or do they have to be typed?
We do.
We do what? Have the ability to scan?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything that can be scanned can be posted either in a PDF or Word or a JPEG file. The public actually is more informed now than it's ever been before because of the Internet. All of these things, I know Mr. Flood doesn't have a computer, as he stated, but all of these bills, if you hunt around the state sites, there's more information than there's ever been over, in the last decade there, and most of the things that they're working on are posted. And interestingly, most of the legislature, legislators that are working on things have their own websites where they're posting information on the bills and events that they're working on. The libraries do have the use of computers, and maybe we can take a look at helping them come up with a list of various websites that are available to obtain that information, because it's so abundant out there, and there's so much of it. But it will almost exclusively in this day and age be available in the electronic medium on the Internet, out in cyberspace. It's a term, I think it's an older term now, I don't hear it much, but it's all there. And maybe you can encourage your libraries to print out copies of all that and maybe have it on a clipboard there as a public service, too. We do try to make it available here as a public service, but we're not as convenient as your local library, and possibly the libraries could have, I know they have newspapers and they do the magazines, and possibly they can have a State House report or information like that available to their end users. If it takes some cooperative effort from us on where it's at and so forth, I'd love to work with you all on that project, if you care to push the issue. Okay?
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that bill, reducing the water rates for the seniors sixty-five and older. Maybe Mr. Innes could answer this question. Is that something that we would have to wait for that bill to be passed or denied to be able to do that for our county residents? Because when I was on city council in Lorain, I was, I reduced the water rates for our seniors in the city as long as they qualified for the Homestead Act. Is that something we can do here in the county?
Yes, we do.
At our own discretion?
Can I take that?
Sure.
Well, yeah, Mr. Innes, I think you want. We have a number of, we have about forty-five miles of water line that we maintain and service within the Sanitary Engineers Department, and I'm working on water rates right now. So deja vu, it's a convenient time to have that discussion. I will put it into the proposal I have with my recommendations jointly with Mr. Conney concerning some, we're going to be requesting some increases, quite frankly, on the rates because of maintenance issues. And can we address it at that time?
Sure.
But as a specific answer, you've set the rates for your water lines. Now, we're charged a rate by, we don't produce the actual water, we obtain most of our water from the city of Elyria. They charge us, but surcharge and maintenance charge and things like that, we do, on top of that, you have control of that. You would not necessarily have control of reducing the rate beyond what Elyria charges us downward. But I'll get you some information.
Maybe we could work cooperatively with Elyria and have them reduce the rates for their seniors also, and ours.
Sounds like a challenge.
Yeah.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, I move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash." Litter lowers property values and it's costly to clean up.
Keep Lorain County beautiful. Put the lid on trash.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorain County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorain County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorain County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorain County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorain County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorain County's twenty-one townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorain. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorain when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorain's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that pass through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officer- Its first officers were elected in eighteen twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen eleven to the Beaver Creek. By eighteen fifteen, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskyville, today the intersection of Roots fifty-eight and one-thirteen, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By eighteen thirty-six, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in eighteen seventy-three, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In nineteen oh nine, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In nineteen seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in nineteen seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In eighteen sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen seventeen. The Village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossen in eighteen sixteen. Ten years later, the Rossens were forced to build a grist mill or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village, the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Elyria Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in eighteen twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. La Porte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Elyria and the city, which also bears his family name. In eighteen seventeen, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Elyria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of eighteen seventeen, moved from New York State to the one-hundred-sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen seventy to nineteen hundred. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In eighteen eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen twenty-four, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in eighteen eighteen requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen thirty-three and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only coed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen ninety-two, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen twenty, Abner Loveland Junior became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Senior had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen twelve. By eighteen twenty, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen twenty-one. By eighteen thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporated Township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. La Grange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen twenty-five, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name La Grange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of La Grange. By eighteen seventy-five, the center had grown into a village also incorporated as La Grange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcocks, who built the first frame house in eighteen thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in eighteen ninety-one. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of eighteen thirty-two to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by eighteen thirty-five, the commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By eighteen eighty, close to seven hundred citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester's center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.